I'd like to call to order the special town council meeting for June 8th. If we could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call.
Mike Rillio.
Here.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pondinas.
Here.
Mike Schilling is absent. Gerald Swatz.
Here.
Joe Wizewati.
Here.
David Westland.
Present.
And Beth Hernandez. Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item two, new business, A is appointments, consider appointment of specific individual as Parks and Recreation Superintendent. Joe.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, members of the council, I'm very pleased to announce that we have finalized the selection of a candidate for the Parks and Recreation Superintendent. As you already know, we've interviewed the finalists for the position. Prior to extending the offer, I had conversations with each of the town council members regarding the selection of the candidate. I'm pleased to announce that Michael O'Shea has accepted our offer of employment with the town of St. John. Mr. O'Shea has six years of experience as Park Superintendent for the town of Dyer, with 16 years of experience in the Parks and Recreation field. Mr. O'Shea is a Masters of Science in Recreation, Sports, and Tourism from the University of Illinois-Champaign-Urbana. He is a Certified Parks and Recreation Professional, which was a requirement by the town's job posting. Mr. O'Shea was instrumental in helping Dyer Parks and Recreation Department grow and strengthen bonds within the community, as well as securing grants. In fact, one of the references indicated in his grant-writing abilities were far superior, and they also said he will be a good addition for the town of St. John. Finally, Mr. O'Shea is a resident of St. John as well. So, members of the council, at this time, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Mike O'Shea as Parks and Recreation Superintendent.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike, for the support for that. Thank you, Brian. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a question. I didn't know anything about this. I knew about the interview with him and another gentleman. I knew the other gentleman was offered that position, but I didn't find out anything until probably Saturday, and I sent all you guys an email expressing my views. I can read it now, or I can just let it go, but none of you have gotten back with me. And I had some questions about it, and I won't bring those questions up, but I don't think it's right, and I think I need to see, and I think, I don't know how many people have this package, its benefits. That's gonna, is that gonna add to it? And we're gonna increase his salary by, that salary by $17,678. That's a lot of money. Now, this board did away with the Parks Department, and we could've had Tyler, but Tyler, because of the political nonsense that was going on with us and them, left. And that, we could've got Tyler to stay, but I think the damage was already done. I think that this is a lot of money, $17,000. Where's the money gonna come from? Do we have to do another appropriation? Did we think about that? And what kind of vacation is this gentleman gonna get? Vacation time, sick time, that's gonna add to that, isn't it? Well, that, and in most cases, that should add to his salary.
Well, he's a department head, so I believe the vacation time is pretty standard all the way across.
But what, what are, where's the information for that, for somebody to look at? Does Mike have it? Does Brian have it? Does Mike Schilling have it? I know I didn't get it, and it would've been nice if he just, would've just answered my email, or said, okay, fine. I did listen to the one interview, I couldn't listen to the other one. I had that opportunity, but that's not your fault. I couldn't make the other interview.
Okay.
I'd like to make a few comments. So Tyler, I had a, some, I had the privilege to work for a few months with Tyler. There is, the fact is, is that when Tyler left, we attempted to keep Tyler. We tried, we did, we offered him additional money, and he didn't want to stay. He left and went to Chesterton. So, if you're, if what you're saying is that we could've offered him this additional money to his state, we offered him more money, he didn't stay.
But you didn't offer this much, most likely.
That's, maybe right. I'm not sure exactly what the dollar amount was. So anyways, can I finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so, and I also, I object to your comment that somehow the rest of us got more information than you did.
I asked, I said.
Can I finish, please?
You go ahead and finish.
So, we all sat through the interview with the two candidates. The process was, our town manager, he vetted through the applicants, and the two that were qualified, and I only saw two as well. I did not see any of the others. Did you see any of the others? Okay, I didn't either.
No.
So, and we both saw through those, and you're aware that the first gentleman got an offer.
Right.
He did not accept.
I got that.
So you sat through the interview with Mike.
Right.
And you sat, so you know as much as the rest of us.
Okay, what you don't know is this is the third time, this guy has been passed up three times. This is his third time coming back to the town. If he was so good, you would've, you would've.
Mr. If I can interrupt, please, we're talking about a personnel matter and opening session, I just wanna caution the council.
Well, I'm just saying, well, what happened, and it's not right.
So.
And I would like, I mean, if you're gonna do this, Mike, you're a businessman.
So my, all I wanna make sure is it's clear, 'cause the accusation that some board members or some councilmen received additional information that you didn't is not true.
I asked.
That's the point that I wanna make sure I make.
I did refuse, I asked.
That we all received the same.
If you all had the same.
Excuse me, all of us received, that's my main point. If you have additional information, and you're, everybody's entitled to their own opinion and their own thoughts, for sure, amen to that. So, but I received the same information, had the same information to make decision as you did. I object to the comment that any of us received more. I'm not aware of any of that.
I asked, I didn't say you did. I said, did you get any more information, other than me? But at least you guys all had the courtesy of finding out that you were gonna hire the second guy. I didn't get that until Joe called me, and that was on Monday. So, again, it's just called communication, Mike. Whether you agree with me, or I agree with you on everything, that's just how things should move. Communication is, does a lot of good things, if you use it the right way.
All right, then I'm gonna call for the question. All in favor of the motion to confirm the appointment of Michael O'Shea for Parks and Recreation Superintendent, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That is approved, three to one.
Mr. President, if I may introduce Mr. O'Shea.
Please do.
Mike, if you would come up, say a few words if you'd like. This is Mike O'Shea. Congratulations on your appointment.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to it. I, St. John resident, I've been in the field of park recreation since 2006, so I have a lot of ideas, a lot of, a lot of plans that I'd like to do for the good people of St. John, so I just thank you for the opportunity, and you won't regret it, and I'll be here the first day, I believe it's the 20th, is what we talked about. So, thank you again.
Thank you, congratulations, look forward to work with you. Congratulations.
Okay, item B, ordinance 1771. Joe?
Thank you. So, the ordinance is presented amends the Parks and Recreation Superintendent's salary. As most everyone knows, the previous superintendent's salary was significantly low in comparison to other communities. This brings the salary to competitive level, and more in line with where we should be. I want the council to know that, for the record, and that I did have conversations with our former Park Superintendent regarding the salary, and that it was our desire to retain him, so I did ask the specific questions with regard to what it would take to retain him, and it didn't matter about a dollar amount. He was, he had already made up his mind that he was determined to leave at that point, so I respected that, and I, you know, he respectfully declined that. So, we have had conversations with each of the town council members about the proposed salary, and the salary ordinance was submitted for the council's consideration on Friday.
Okay, so do I have a motion to consider ordinance 1771 in first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, for support for that.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments? Actually, just, if you could clarify one thing, Joe, so.
Yes.
This, the package that Mr. O'Shea is getting was similar to what we've done in the past, with the exception of the salary.
It is.
Okay.
In fact, the vacation. Oh, I'm sorry, it is, in fact, the vacation time will be truncated because of the six-month difference, so he's not gonna get the full four weeks, he'll have two weeks, and then January 1st, that would take effect.
Is there an evaluation clause in there, so after six months, we evaluate them?
Well, in fact, I'll be evaluating all the department heads, and providing those evaluations to the council. But yes, there will be evaluations done regularly. In six months, if that's the desire, I have no problem with that.
And then, would they give an increase in pay, or no? Or just evaluate the?
There would be evaluation on the performance.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll call for the question then. All in favor of motion to consider ordinance 1771 in first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That is approved, three to one. We will go on then to item number C, financial matters of the corporation. Item number one would be motion to approve an independent contract agreement with Kelly Lindholm for Parks and Recreation Day Camp. Joe?
Yeah, this is, this is for the day camp instructor. This is basically done regularly, independent contract with the individual for the day camp.
Okay. So, do I have a motion then to approve the independent contractors agreement with Kelly Lindholm for the Parks and Recreation Day Camp?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike, support for that.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, four to zero. Item number two, motion to approve the repaving at the entrance of Heartland Park. Joe?
So, this, if I could, the revised agenda that you guys received on this states that the amount will be $18,700, and that's for Holland Asphalt, just for the record on that. This is to repave the entryway to Heartland Park. The contractor is ready to mobilize and get this done as soon as we can get this underway.
So do I have a motion to approve the repaving to the entrance of Heartland Park, not to exceed $18,700, and to authorize the clerk treasurer to remit the payments from appropriations number 2204001361-000 to Holland Asphalt?
So moved.
Second.
All, questions or comments?
Where's the money coming from? Is that coming out of ARPA, Joe?
No, this is out of the parks maintenance.
Would the, would the town consider half parks and half town? Because I know Tyler, when he was here, we were trying to get that done, Bob Davis, we asked him questions, and it was like, well, it's a town, it's a park, and if we could split that, that would be nice, 'cause the parks would have a little extra money for some other things, if the council wants to do that. Otherwise, you know, it shouldn't be everything come out of the parks, I know, everybody uses it, so, I mean, the town uses it for a park in the back, so can we do something like that?
Well, it is a park, so why wouldn't the park pay for it?
But the park is always getting, well, I think it should be split, but that's just my opinion.
Any other questions or comments? Then all in favor of motion to approve the repaving to the entrance of Heartland Park, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That is approved, three to one. Item number three is motion to approve the waiver of vendor fees for the July 3 Freedom Fest pursuant, ordinance 1746. Joe?
So, ordinance 1746 basically states that there's a nominal fee for vendors in town events. This would waive that fee. The fee on these would be like $50, so they'd be waiving $50 fees for the vendors on this, for the town event.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the waiver of the vendor fees?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, support.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments? Then all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, four to zero. And then item number D, on financial matters, is the study session for the American Rescue Plan Act. And I am gonna turn this over to you, Joe, and you can.
Mr. President, would it be, would it be appropriate to stop and maybe take some pictures with our new superintendent?
So, but he'd kinda stick around till the end, and I was gonna catch that at the end.
Sounds good.
Yes, thank you for the reminder.
All the department heads said they're gonna speak real fast, so.
You gave an hour and a half.
Don't go too.
You haven't talked to this crew, have you?
Kevin might need to.
Oh, it's all Kevin's fault, is that it, Steve?
So, first of all, I wanna, I wanna thank all the department heads, and the clerk treasurer, who had given input on this, you know, it's kinda, understand that this is not something that the council is going to be making any decisions on tonight. This is kinda for you to take home, digest, go through, so we can make some finalized decisions. We can hear your input on this, and then we can put together a final numbers, where we can have that, basically, public meeting, and solicit the public, you know, input on this as well. So, I hope that, you know, we can let the department heads kinda go through their presentation, and let them get through that, and then ask the questions that they may have at that point, so. All right. Without further ado, Chief Ladue, you're up first.
Jason has his PowerPoint, and I made it at high school. He'll pull up real quick. I did make copies of it for you guys, if you could not pay attention to what I'm saying, or take a home look at it. Whatever you do.
Since when did we ever pay attention to what I was saying?
No one ever does. Your wife comes to that.
No, I know the feeling.
And you understand why I can tell you.
That's right. Well, I deserve it.
Jeez, can we get even worse color, than red? Just hard to read.
Wow, it is difficult to read.
So you're testing our ability to read here.
I was just gonna say, I realize the fire department.
I was trying to say, funny, be a little thrifty.
I understand it's.
I could also send it to you digitally as well.
Fire Department, red, but come on, Kevin.
Sorry. All right, so you guys all know I'm from the fire department, and this is our short presentation on the American Rescue Plan requests that we have. So, Joe, and I don't know who actually did this, maybe the clerk treasurer's office, I don't know, the, this packet that you guys have kinda has a synopsis of what I'll be talking about, but this slide basically says that. So I'm gonna talk in detail of each request, and why I feel that we need it, but just a quick overview, we're asking for $378,856 for our new fire gear. Our other, some of our other requests is safety building build-out completion, so that'd be $440,000. Two additional firefighters at the cost of $286,731. Ballistic vests at a cost of $15,000. Vehicle radios at a cost of $20,000. Conference room AV upgrades, cost of eight grand. Toughbooks, laptops, or tablets, or really tablets, we have it under toughbooks, at $8,000, and training site renovations and upgrades at $100,000. Giving my grand total, or the fire department's grand total, at 100, or, sorry, $1,256.87. Sorry, let's say that like I understand. $1,286,587. All right, Jason's the next one, please. All right, so currently, St. John Fire Department has more than 70% of its members in non-compliant gear. By complacency, who makes this complacency rule is the NFPA. NFPA 1981 says that fire gear can safely and effectively be used for their protective ensemble and elements up for 10 years. These pictures are really hard to see, but the first picture on the top left shows that gear is from 2006. That was our last major purchase of gear. In 2006, we were 30 sets of gear. These sets do not have the built-in drag rescue device, so basically, what that is, if a firefighter goes down, we have a, basically webbing that goes around us, that's built into the coat, that we're able to help drag that person in or out of a building, and help save that person. It also has lost the vast majority of its protective chemical treatments, and the material itself degrades. All that gear, 15 of that specific set, has already been sent out for repairs, and is not in working order. We have met with three major companies, and five, three major gear companies, so manufacturers, and five different sales companies, for representatives for the gear. We did wear tests and comparisons of the available professional studies and information they provided. We decided to go with Fire Dex, TechGen 71, what we call 25 interceptor packages. So the interceptor package is kinda my second set of points there. Interceptor's package is a secondary set of gear. It's not structural gear, so it's not meant to go into fires. It's meant for EMS calls, rescues, things like that. So right now, if we go on EMS call, our members are using their fire gear, which also, if we get blood on it, we have to launder it, which every time we launder our gear, we lose some of the protective coating that's on it. So the 25 sets would go to our full-time members, and our paid part-time on calls are volunteers. We would also include, this total quote includes helmets, a cancer-filtering nomex. Thyroid cancer is a very high cancer in the fire service because of the particulate matter that's get caught in our nomex hood, so we're looking for particulate matter filter hoods. We would get two of those, and every time there's a fire, I would say, hey, Wayne, let me have yours. We launder it, give him another one, and we would just rotate those. So it's a cancer prevention type thing. This new gear is lighter, it offers more protection. New gears also will aid in cancer prevention initiatives, so again, it's built so you can launder it more, but also will have that particulate matter filters in there, so we're brought in some of that cancer-causing agents. And this will be piggybacked into some other requests I have down, down the line. But if you look, the top picture is just a 2006 set of gear. The picture adjacent to that is 2006. The picture on the very bottom, on the left, is a 2006 set of gear. Again, not compliant, 10 years lifespan. The two other pictures are of new gear. So we do still get some new gear, but we've never gotten enough to replace and get everyone in compliant gear. That's request number one. Thank you, Jason. All right, request number two is the public safety building in a build-out. So since the construction of the public safety building, the population of the town has nearly tripled in size. Both the fire department and police department have added members, but we have not updated that building. The building was built for future inspection, expansion in mind, and again, we don't call this a fire station, we call this a firehouse. The reason we call it a firehouse is, we live there. We're there for 24 hours at a time, every third day. This is another home for us. This year, we did add private sleeping quarters, so that our men and women do not have to have an open-air room with no separation. The council did approve that. This proposal is to finish the annex, the open space upstairs, which I have the pictures here. What this would do would make a clean gear storage downstairs, so we're very cautious of bringing our fire gear into our living space, 'cause we don't want that there, so it would have a special room just for gear that's separate from our living quarters, so we could keep that cancer-causing agents out, right next to our laundry room for our gear. This would also finish the concrete floors in the bay, paint the floors, add new lines on there, and walls throughout the station. More importantly, upstairs, we would address our undersized and aging kitchen with our dayroom, and add a new kitchen upstairs and a dayroom. Additionally, the PD would receive two offices and new evidence room. This project would ensure that the firehouse remains functional for years to come. So this is what of currently space I'm talking about, so if you're looking at the fire station, this is the windows that face the park, that we can see. Our current living quarters have no windows, so you do feel kind of isolated when you're in there. This would give us some light, so we could actually see what's going on outside. Jason, next slide. So I have some pictures of some modern fire departments and kitchens around the area. This is just a given idea of what we're kinda looking at. Crown Point used some of their ARPA funds to update their station and their kitchen, so concrete floors, hard countertops, places to sit and eat. One big thing, like I said, this is a firehouse. We live there, eating together at night, especially when we have our dinner, we all try to get together. If we have training, we have POCs there, our volunteers, again, we all meet there. This is a gathering place, the home of, the heart of the home, so we want something big enough we could effectively sit everyone. Occasionally, we also have meals with the police department, not all the time. Sometimes they're in there, not sitting in the chairs, but sitting down eating, 'cause we have the ability to cook, they're in the cars, so we try to do that. Maryville Fire has something very similar, concrete floors, or linoleum floors, tile floors, big kitchen, a lot of space. The next two slides, the next slide is Cedar Lake Fire, they just updated theirs. Again, everything we have is residential, we don't have anything that's commercial. When I get to the pictures of our current station, I'll kinda show you why we're looking for something commercial-based. And Sherrville has a big space, again, for everyone to gather. Jason, the last slide on this one, please. So currently, this is our public safety building, our current living quarters. So our current living quarters is downstairs, away from the bay, but near some of the bedrooms. The idea would be to take this area, this would be a clean gear storage area, make, convert that, it's where we have our table. We only have six seats, eight seats at the table, there's times where we have 10, 12 people there, so people are standing in each other's way. At the table, we just want space where everyone could sit down and eat. The other two pictures on the top right are our current kitchen. Our current kitchen has a, and I wish I got a better picture, but on the side by the oven and stove, there's metal there, 'cause we burnt the wall. So it's not a very good story that the fire department would burn down, the fire department cooking, but there's not space in there. It's a very, very small place. Times we're cooking for eight people, this is just a normal stove that you would have at your home. We're looking for something more commercial that we could use and feed a mass amount of people. That's this request. One thing that I was advised, that's something that you guys, you guys, the council, would entertain, is in the five-year plan, we do have an additional firefighter in the year 2023 and the year 2025. If it's your appetite to maybe forward the money for that, that's what this is. So, again, in the five-year plan, we have two additional firefighters, 2023, 2025. Myself and Chief Flores and the police department take turns, one every other year. Staffing would ensure a in-service all-the-time, or in-service ALS fire apparatus. Right now, we do not have a in-service fire apparatus all the time. Why does that affect us, and why is that important? ISO is the insurance trading organization that affects all our homeowners. If we have a provided dedicated fire apparatus, your insurance would go down. And I can answer that honestly, 'cause ISO answered my question. So just keep in mind, this request is that we don't currently and constantly always supply a fire apparatus. I staff minimum three people, that supplies me an ambulance and one other person. Okay? There's times where we're asking for more help, we want to have the staffing to provide that dedicated fire apparatus, so we can ensure safety to our town. This will allow that. One thing to understand also, we did apply for the SAFER grant. The SAFER grant is a FEMA grant. This would allow us to have some funding. We asked for nine, knowing that's a pipe dream. The reason we asked for nine, that would be three on each shift, so ideally, in a perfect world, I would ask for three people at a time, 'cause then I could increase a service. So adding one or two people doesn't allow me to increase that service constantly. It allows me to increase that service one shift, so 33% of the time, if I get people multiples of three, I could add that service across the entire calendar. So, asking for nine, so what would happen would be, if we obtain this, the grant pays 100% of their benefits, salary, and education, and equipment associated with hiring them for the first three years. After year three, the grant cuts off, and funding would have to be on the town. So this would also be able to mix into that, so if we were able to get that grant, you would be able to take maybe some of this ARPA money, that if you do consider this a prudent request, you'd be able to get it back through the grant money. But keep in mind that grant money and the ARPA money has to be, for a full-timer, prolonged, to keep them. I wouldn't want to lay anyone off. That is this request. I'm trying to hurry, I'm sorry. All right, does anyone know what September 8th, 2021 was? Chief Flores? Do you remember? So September 8th, 2021, you do, Joe, was the active shooter incident we had at Lake Central High School. Luckily for us, it wasn't a true active shooter incident, okay? Okay? Knocking wood. However, recent news, it's, it's out there. It proves that St. John is not in a bubble. So I'm asking for fifteen thousand dollars for Penn adjustable armor, body armor like that. It would be on the ambulances and on the engine, so our guys, if they go there, they have the armor. The idea is, we're not going in, we're not getting the bad guy. We don't do that. My friends over here do. What we found out from Columbine, though, and all the things that happened since then, police go in, their guys go direct a threat, they get the bad guy. However, in Columbine and all these other school shootings, unfortunately, we walk by kids and other people that were hurt. We weren't going to help them because we were worried about getting the bad guy. The new science is, we'd go in with police officers. So I'd go in with Daryl and Chief Flores, and they would guard me essentially, and I'd be taking care of people and moving these kids, students, whoever, to a safe place, and then we would evacuate them out. The hot zone, we wouldn't be in. So again, I don't, I'm not looking for a gun. I'm not a police officer. I like running into fire. I like running away from this. But I also realize that this is a very unfortunate thing that we're dealing with, and we could effectively help and save lives if we're able to go in with cover from the police. So that's what this is for. We would ask for grant funds, so I've been very lucky, knocking wood. Hopefully, my luck continues for grant funding. We would also need ballistic helmets and some additional bags. Basically, the bags would have a lot of tourniquets and a few specialized Band-Aids. We're not there doing all our paramagic that we would normally do in the ambulance, but it is just to stabilize a person, drag him or her to a safe place, and then when the bad guy or girl is done, we get them out. That's what this is for. Vehicle radios. So I'm nearing the end. Vehicle radios. I'm asking for twenty grand for vehicle radios. These are the mobile radios that are currently in our rigs. With the current fleet, we have, we're short two radios. And however, the additional radios will be used in new vehicles as well. So you guys just approved the new engine. We would save some money by using this for the new engine, having those two radios. One thing that you will hear soon from Chief Flores and I, that our current portable radios are going to be moonlighted by Motorola. So basically Motorola is no longer supporting them. We can still use them, and they will still work for a while, but soon we'll be asking for more portable radios. This is different than the portable radios. These radios are affixed to the truck, and they will still work for, for time coming, according to our dispatcher, our dispatch and Motorola. I'm ready, Jason. So conference room upgrade. I'm asking for eight thousand dollars for a conference room upgrade. So this was equipment present in two thousand and six when we built the station. So it's replacing the AV system that does not support current technology in audio, visual inputs. There's times where we have, like, for example, we had our insurance agency come and talk to us. They wanted to give a presentation. We weren't able to use it because nothing connects. During COVID, this is when we really found this out, during COVID, when we were virtual on everything, having meetings in there, having a big group in there to have a meeting. We already have a screen. This is just replacing the projector, some of the AV stuff, so the connections are there. This is more, Jason could probably talk techie to you, but this is how it would work with modern-day technology. Why is it important that COVID's over? So now, a lot of our continuing education found out that it was worked remotely. So we have a, a, a long list of continuing education. It's paramedics that we have to continue. They want remote. They don't want to see us anymore. They want to have remote. So if we're able to do that and communicate with them, so have a small teleconference system on there, so that, that phone on the table, again, above my tech grade, the phone on the table, where we could all talk, that type of thing, so back and forth, so they could see us, we could see them. It would help with education and accommodate these classes. All right, tough book update. So again, I think a better title for this would be tablet. But again, tough book is just a rubberized type of, of tablet or laptop. It's, it's easy for me to say. We're probably not the easiest on some of our equipment. We don't use it in the best of environments, but these are one of the, some of the things I'm talking about here. We use these tablets in a varied fashion. For example, all of our patient care reports are done on an iPad. That was by suggestion of the company that, the, the PCR company that says iPads worked at the time. So we use those. We have a, a Otter Box on them. We've been very good so far on them, probably to my surprise and Jason's surprise. Those help us gain information on, on, on calls. We also use tablets like this. The tablet in top left is our MDT, Mobile Data Terminal. Those we use to gather information from dispatch, same thing like PD has in their car. We could get information that, hey, don't go there, there's a bad guy. Hey, this person has COVID XYZ. The code on the house is this. Stuff they don't want to say over the radio, they talk on that. This would give us some of those. I was able to secure three years, three years ago, probably five, six years ago now, Dell Latitudes, the one, the top one. We have one of those left. We have a couple of vehicles that still don't have them. We're waiting on the part to put them in. I've secured grants for these, so I've gotten some other ones. But down the road, we're going to need more. Just like tech, everything else, it fails, it stops.
Twenty twenty-five, and I'll be covering that in my presentation.
So I'm sorry to go ahead of you a little bit. Again, we will still seek funding for this. I was able to get ten thousand dollars last year for additional funding for MDTs, because it's super important. And the tablets, the tablets, going away from paper and trying to remember everything. So I go, we go on scene to help somebody and trying to remember the blood pressure and everything else you did. The bottom picture shows the iPad and the heart monitor, they talk to each other. And then we could send it all up to the cloud, and then when we sit down and do the report, it's all there, and then we send it to the hospital. It's much more efficient, and I'm not, I haven't been in this position or field very long, but even better than when I started. It helps with patient care. So that's what that's about.
Is that per unit, Kevin? Eight grand?
No, eight grand would cover a bunch of units. So I, I, I want to say, if we get an iPad, I want to say they're right around five hundred to six hundred dollars more. So I'd ask Jason, the Latitudes, they were right around two grand each. We're trying to get more of them, just to keep everything uniform. Last but not least, the training site. So the training site was built in early nineties, and it serviced for over twenty-five years, almost thirty years now. Right now, the training site hosts our, the District One Fire Academy. District One is Lake Newton, Jasper, La Porte, Lake Newton, Jasper, La Porte counties. We all have a, a, a fire academy here in St. John, we're very proud of. Most of the tools and supplies there and actual training aids are supplied by District One or Indiana Department of Homeland Security. So we have an entire building that's, we have a wall of, of hand tools, that it's an NVFP. I'd like to go out there and use it for my own department, but it's state property. We share. We get funding from the state. We also get funding from you guys as well yearly, and I think this will come up later in the ARPA request yearly, you guys do a donation that helps us fund the training site. So the volunteer organization owns the property, and they run that. This is something that we're looking to, this upgrade a little bit. So one of the big things that we found out, we do not do live fire trainings. Why would we want to do live fire trainings? We want to practice how we, we would in real life. The building that we have there in the picture on the top is an older building, an older picture. We have since obtained funds from the state. We put a wall on our training tower. So we have a training tower there. We're able to repel from there. PD uses it, not, our police department has been there, but SWAT goes there, other people go there. You're able to repel. We're able to put our ladders up to it, even our aerial ladders to train. So it's been used a lot. But one of the big things is the live fire training. Live fire training is what we need to train on. The only place to do the live fire training. Live fire training is what we need to train on. The only place to do it right now is in Valparaiso at the MAC. Our building is not certified for it. We have people in our department that have NSPA fourteen oh three live fire instructors, that we'd be able to do this if we had the right type building. So on the bottom, the picture on the bottom is Beechers, new structure. It's a Conex box structure, and these are now the in thing and, and more fiscally responsible thing to do. Because of damages in there, you burn in one box, you're able to take the box out and replace that box. It's set up as, I wish I had a picture of the back, it's set up as a walkout basement. So one of the big things that we like to do when we get there, we walk around your house. We like to say, hey, there's a walkout basement, there's this, there's that. It's called doing a three-sixty. It's giving situational awareness. It'd help us with that. These are also available for not, not dummy rounds. What are they called? It's simunitions could go off in there, and they could use that. So clearing rooms, so PDs would be able to use it still as well. The inside is available to move walls, so it's not always the same. So once you search one house, like the one we have here, you search it, and you search it again. There's little things I could do in there, but you know the, the floor plan. If I went into your home and I don't know the floor plan, you get surprised, especially when you can't see. So this is something that, again, would help us. One other thing that I would like to do is add a, a classroom. And the reason this came up, recently, we started working with Lake Central High School and the Career Center, and they were willing to host a class at our training site. One of the biggest stumbling blocks that we had was we don't have an onsite classroom, and there's only one bathroom there. So if, if we were going to host something like that, and the cool thing is, if I was in high school, I would jump at it. You get high school credits for it as well, and you'd come out at age eighteen, you'd be able to be a firefighter. You have the firefighter cert. And the state just changed the full-time pension to age eighteen. So we are having a hard time getting people in the firefield. This would have helped us. This is the only reason it didn't happen this time. Students, having enough students and having their parents allow it, and having that career track was really the, the goal. But having another bathroom and a classroom onsite, we would even be able to branch out to other schools and maybe make this a regional thing that St. John would be able to host. All right, one other slide conclusion. Joe's giving me the stop talking. All right. So again, we're talking, we're asking for a total of one million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty-seven. So my two top capital expenses are gear and station upgrades. I get this is a rather large request. We feel these requests affect our safety. This will also cement the fire department as a cornerstone of our community. The fire department has actively seek alternative funding sources, at least since I've been the chief. Again, we have been blessed and received the vast majority of those grants that I have applied for. Currently, we have the SAFER grant, again, that's open for nine firefighters. We also have an AFG grant, which is Assistance to Firefighters grant, that we went in with Dyer for our air packs. If we were able to obtain that, that would save the department and town nearly four hundred thousand dollars. I'm hoping to hear about that every day I check. We, like all the other departments in town, worked throughout COVID, helping our community diligently and safely. And any consideration from the council will be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Questions? Or we doing that at the end?
No, we do questions after everybody's done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Jerry, if you want to entertain questions after they're done, that way they can finish up. It's up to you.
No, because one of my questions is going to be, is there any overlap? Unless they hear everybody else's, we don't know if the overlap is there, so.
Quick, lock the bank. Run for the doors.
Hang out of your wallet.
Lock your wallets.
You putting, you got this put up or no?
So anyway, on our potential projects and our purchases for public works, we got quite a few. And of course, they're a little more expensive than what Kevin was talking about. The first one is the West eighty-fifth Avenue FDR project. That's been somewhat in the works for the past three years. We're finally working towards getting it completed. It's an interlocal agreement project with the Town of Sherrville and Lake County Highway. I believe that Sherrville's already signed off on it, and we're still waiting on a county. What it is, it's a full-depth reclamation from Alexander to Lake Hills Drive. And what that is, is this equipment that will come in, they'll tear up the road, totally chew it up, and spit it right back out with the emulsions, let it set up, and then they'll come back in, grade it to where it needs to be, and then put a surface on it. And of course, the striping. There's a little more to it. It's all engineered. You have curb work, approaches to the side streets coming off of that.
Isn't there one section, Bob, that's going to be cut down a little bit because it's worse than the others?
Actually, no, not on this one. It's full, it's full depth. So it's going to be the same depth all the way through.
Okay.
Okay? We had in here, I don't know if he's got it up, we just have to reverse the numbers. Town of Sherrville should be one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and Lake County's portion should be one hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Is that correct, Joe?
That, that is correct, yes.
Yes, so.
The numbers are right, they're just wrong.
Correct.
Correct.
So that's what that is. That's just not a milling the road and paving it at its full depth to try to get down to the good subbase on that. The next one we have is Ninety-third Avenue repaving from Marquette Street to Blaine Street. That's been failing for several years. It's gotten to the point that we can no longer temporarily patch it and make it work. We were going to try to include some of that into the Klein Avenue extension, but we won't be able to wait that long. So we're looking at getting that repaved, and that's about three hundred and thirty-one thousand. And then Joe's been working on the funding for that, other funding.
Yeah. So with respect to that, so we've got one hundred and twenty-seven and one hundred and sixty-eight thousand coming back from Sherrville and Lake County. The total project cost for the eighty-fifth FDR project is six, about six eighty-eight-ish. So that would leave some money left over to kind of get the two ninety-third street projects done, this being one of them.
Okay. Everybody understand that one? That's pretty, say, cut and dried. The Joliet Street culvert project, that is over by Industrial Drive off of Joliet. That's a Lake County project, but they're inviting us to review it with them, so we can possibly widen the road. When they come in, of course, we're going to have to pay our portion of it. They've reached out to us. We had a meeting the other day. Still in the initial engineering stages, and so they'll be working with Joe and the council to determine if it's going to be one additional lane or two additional lanes. The town's portion at this time, they've gave a rough estimate of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. Again, it's just in initial stages and planning, and then, of course, what is decided after.
And so with replacement of this, this culvert, as Bob was saying, is, this is Lake County's culvert. So they're going to move ahead with the project regardless. So the town has an opportunity to expand the roadway for a third lane. So we could either have a right turn lane or, you know, left turn lane, however it's configured. But there's also another option to add a fourth lane. So that way, if that development, a potential development that's, that's teed up on the south end of that area, does come to fruition, then maybe that, that, that's something they would be, they would entertain.
Could you say that again? So Lake County is going to do three lanes?
No, they're going to do two lanes.
Okay.
So they're going to replace existing, what's their own lane.
Right, okay.
So for capacity in the future, the town could add that third lane.
Gotcha, okay.
You know, as either, you know, a turn lane or, you know, an additional lane at some point. The, the other option was to add that fourth lane for an additional lane movement for the potential development that's, that's there. I did have a conversation with that particular developer, and they are interested in, in possibly doing something on that. So that, that's more to come, but, you know, they were interested in the fact that it's in engineering right now, so.
Would that include a bike crossing, then?
That would have, that would have on the north side and south side of the road, a lane for pedestrian and/or bike.
Okay, good. All right.
Another Joliet Street bridge replacement. This is further east, out towards the gates on Joliet, between Garden Way and Park Place. About, well, just over a year ago, there was a V. Hickel accident, and they took out one of the headwalls on this box culvert. That box culvert is probably put in seventy-five years ago. It's withstood many hits, except this one, it didn't. So it knocked one headwall off into the ditch. This particular one does not belong to Lake County Highway. It is the Town of St. John's. At the time, when they were doing Joliet work, roadwork, they wanted to widen that, but nobody could fund it, so it didn't happen. So we're looking at widening it at the same time and putting in a new box culvert. That's pretty much it on that one. That one has a rough engineering done on it, and the estimate is like six hundred thousand. That was done probably a year ago, that estimate.
How much wider would they make it? Three lanes? Does it be three lanes total?
It would probably equal that, but it wouldn't be three lanes. It would just equal.
Have the little off on the side?
Yes. Dump trucks. We have two dump trucks that need to be replacing. One's over twenty years, and one's over fifteen. They've pretty much met the end of their roadworthiness, and that comes in about four hundred and eighty.
Bobby, how old are those trucks now that you have? How old are those trucks that you have now?
The two that I'm referring to, one's, one's a nineteen ninety-nine, and the other The two that I'm referring to, one's, one's a 1999 and the other's a 2006.
Okay.
And that is a seven-yard dump truck, a complete package, dump body, salt spreader, plow, complete package, single axle.
Are, are these in your five-year plan now?
No.
They're not?
No. The next one we're going to talk about is a storm sewer collection system in Villa Woods. Kalaf subdivision, subdivision was put in around the early 1960s, and there's three of them right in that area, Wildwood, the Oakwoods and Forest. There are no storm sewers. This particular subdivision, Oak, the Oakwoods, they have curbs on it, but no place for the water to go, and people pump their storm water out into the curb line and just runs down the street. There's only one inlet in that whole subdivision besides Kalaf's addition. So what happens in the, in the summertime, it just sits there, it gets slimy, the residents don't like it. In the wintertime, it gets pumped out, freezes in the road. Of course, we don't like that, and the residents don't like that. And it just gets wider and wider as, you know, the season goes on. You can't take enough salt and even melt it away. So we're looking at possibly this subdivision getting a storm sewer put in. That comes in right now about 715,000 dollars. And that would tie everybody into a stormwater collection system. The last thing I'd like to talk about is a salt barn. But with that being said, before we can even do that, we need to purchase property. You can't put it on some land that we don't own. So I like to investigate purchasing some land that can be used to put a salt barn on it, because the one we have is, it doesn't meet our needs today. We've struggled the past couple of years, either between storing it, trying to get enough of it. This past winter, trucking was an issue. We couldn't get it. And it doesn't give you a good feeling when you're sitting there looking at the back of the wall, and you got snow coming, and then there's nothing you can do. So we need to expand that. I like to also include in that some more storage for our rock, sand, dirt, wherever we might have, some bins, some cold storage for our leaf fax, chippers, other equipment we can store outside but under a roof just for protection from the elements. There's a couple of places that we have in mind. We'd like to research it. We don't have any cost estimates on them, but I would like to proceed with Joe and possibly look in at a couple of places and see what we can do. There's also interest that if we get a large enough piece of property, hence location, other departments, town departments, might have possible uses for it too. So it wouldn't be just for public works. It could be for possibly parks, police, maybe even fire for training. So if we get a decent sized property, we can make things happen with it.
Thanks, Bobby.
That's all I have.
Chief Flores, I think I'm going to have you, you come up next, because I think they're going to do, there's back to back, if that's all right?
Chase.
Yeah.
All right, good evening, everyone. Got a PowerPoint here. Jason, want to go to the first one? Okay. So the first project we have here, you see before you, is the hiring of two additional officers. This would get us through the years of, through 2025. As Chief Laduke said, we had, you know, two that we were supposed to get in 2020, or one in 2022, another one in 2024. So this gets us two additional. So this is basically all their salary benefits, the equipment, car, everything else that we have to get for them once they're, they're on. And going, moving forward all the way through 2025 for two officers is 641, 948 is the total for, for the whole, for our whole package. So this would increase our numbers. We just added on in addition to replace the officer that left. So we're at 24 now. This will put us up to 26. And as I expressed before, you know, with our population right now, the national standard, we should be about 40 officers with the amount of population we have here in this town. So we're pretty far behind still. So this would also help. I want to get away from two officer shifts, which we still have quite a few of those because we're so short. So I want to get it to where we have at least three minimum at, at every time. And for us to do that, we would need about 28 to do that. So this would, you know, help us get there, so. That's, my number one priority, obviously, is to build our, our numbers, to get our numbers higher. With, as fast as the town's growing, it's, it's crucial. And it's dangerous to have two officers out there, as, as, as you all know, so that's our first project. The second one is our license plate reader camera. We currently have one in town, on the north end of town. We are looking to get two more, and one would be on the east side of town, near 93rd and Klein somewhere. And the second one would be in the area of 231 and 41. So basically, that would cover all four sides of the town, because County and Dyer have a couple of cameras on the west side of town already. That, that covers 101st coming in from the, the, near the state line area. And then on Sheffield, there's some in that, in that area as well, too. So to do both of those intersections, to get east and, or both directions of travel with all the equipment plus the installation for both of those is 700, or 71,475. So that's all through Vigilant, which the parent company is Motorola. There are other systems out there. Another one that's, that's commonly known, it's called Flock. And their system's just as good at two, however, all, basically 90, I would say maybe 85 to 90% of the cameras in Lake County are this system here, Vigilant, and that's who the Sheriff's Department has and all the surrounding agencies around us use Vigilant. So that's why we, we went with them, and Flock and Vigilant do not talk to each other. So any plates that Flock picks up, we're not getting those and vice versa, so. That's, that's the reason why we went with Vigilant, because that's basically what everybody else around us and in the south suburbs and cities, Chicago, use, use Motorola's Vigilant. So that's our second one. The third one's pretty self-explanatory. It would be two additional police cars, replace some of the older cars in our fleet. We're doing pretty, once we get a couple more, we'll, we'll be good, because we, we went several years without getting cars. I think at one time it was probably close to four, five, six years when we didn't get cars. So we were playing catch-up the last two or three years. So once we get the, the ones this year and an additional, a couple more, if we get those, then we'll be in good shape to put us in a good rotation again. So the 120,000 is for two cars and that totally equipped with all the, the equipment that we put in it. The next one is our fourth project is currently right now, as Chief Laduke stated, that the radios that we use now will be phased out eventually in 2023. So the price that you see here for the two Motorola portables and the two in-car police radios are the current radios that we are currently using now with our portables. Like Chief Laduke said, they'll keep working, but after 2023, if there's any software updates or anything else that needs to be done to them, we, we can't get them updated, because they're not going to service them anymore. So at the bottom there, that radio that you see in the picture, it was just kind of just, so you can kind of put it on your radar for the future, what they're basically forcing us to get through the county and through the system, through Lake County, is the Apex Next portable, which is 7,900 dollars for one radio. So eventually, we're going to have to place 30 portables with that radio, and we have no other option, because that's basically the county system. That's what we have to go to, is this Apex Next, because that also includes a monthly 15-dollar service fee that you have to use because it has Wi-Fi capabilities and all that. So if we were to go into Lake Central, it'll connect to their Wi-Fi system, and the radios will work. Because we had a situation, obviously, at the Lake Central, we had our situation there. Our portables, we couldn't communicate with people inside because they, they didn't work. So this, these portables here would allow us to communicate with each other through Wi-Fi. So that's kind of in the near future, so I just wanted to put that out there, so you're aware that eventually this is going to come up. And also, the fire department's going to have to replace theirs at some point with, with these as well, too. So it's, it's going to be a very costly project, which I'm not happy about, because it's, give me a portable, I can push a button and talk to somebody. That's all I need. I don't need all that fancy stuff. But unfortunately, that's out of our control. So right now, to do the two portables in the in-car, it'd be 14,660 with what we have currently. And then the next one, Jason? So next one is our Taser cartridges. As we use those, obviously, we have to replace the cartridges. So we're looking to get 50 cartridges to have on hand at 50 bucks, or yeah, 40 dollars per cartridge. And that would be 2,000 dollars to get those. And as Chief Laduke said, the PD FD restorations or renovations are up in the second floor. That would give us two offices additionally that what we have upstairs and one evidence room. Unfortunately, when the station was built, the evidence room that we currently have is pretty small. And it's, Joe saw it, it's, there's stuff stacked everywhere, because it, it's tiny. It should have been built a little, way bigger than what it was. That was kind of poorly thought out, in my opinion, but anyways. So this would allow us to take some of that stuff that's in there, that's been in there for years that we still can't get rid of, and take that upstairs and secure that in a secure evidence room. It'll free up a lot of the space down there. And then two additional offices for future growth, if we end up getting, you know, a third detective down the road or detective supervisors or whatever the case may be. So that'll allow us to do that as well, too. And I got the price of 120, and I believe that's our portion of it, correct, Joe?
Correct.
Is that right, Kevin? Okay, so that would be our portion, our two offices in the evidence room. And of course, the evidence room would have all the security measures that evidence rooms need, cameras, locks, so on and so forth. So that's what that all encompasses there. So other than that, that's.
That was a good touch.
Very clever, Steve, very clever.
All right. So yeah, any consideration with our projects, I, we would greatly appreciate it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, Jason, Sergio? Yeah, who's going first?
You will be last, Sergio.
My requests are overlapping between town, public safety, and technology. So we'll start off with public safety. We currently have three tornado sirens in the town. This siren right here belongs to Lake Hills. It currently gets set off by county. According to the specs of these sirens, they are good for about one mile from their point, which is what the map shows. As you can see, we have a lot of town that is not covered adequately. There also needs to be at least a 30 to 50% overlap because of the way the wind can blow sound. So we need a minimum of six tornado sirens to cover the existing proportions of the town. As you can see, we still have some areas that are uncovered, but until we actually get more development in that area, I think we can probably make do with the existing layout. The sites that were chosen for the new tornado sirens are existing lift stations, water treatment plants, or water towers that will minimize the installation cost, because there are already electrical and generators at those locations. Unfortunately, some of those locations are also very near residential homes. So there might be some complaints from residents, you know, having a siren going off every first Saturday of the month at noon, you know, 10 feet from their window. So there might be some adjustment necessi, there might be some adjustments for the locations based on, you know, electrical generators and, you know, residential structures. The next, in the five-year plan, there was a public, the server at the Public Safety Building is now 10 years old. It was originally purchased with the Department of Justice grant that we got, and it is horribly obsolete and is in desperate need of replacement. It was scheduled to be replaced last year as part of the five-year plan. However, it got bumped to this year, so I'm hoping to use that money for that. Also, I would say about 85% of all of the computers in this town will have to be replaced before October of 2025, because that is the end-of-life date for Windows 10. Windows 11 has a very high cost for minimum requirements. Basically, the processor has to have been made within the last three to four years, and almost all of our equipment is a lot older than that. So within the next two years, we're going to have to replace just about every computer in this town. So. Next, I'd like to talk about software. ERP stands for Enterprise Resource Planning Software. Basically, this is software that would replace everything in town. For the resident's point of view, it would be a one-stop shop for everything. There would be a portal that they could log into. They could see their utility bill. They could apply for a building permit. They could upload all the documentation necessary for whatever it is they are doing. If they're doing a shed permit, they could upload their plat of survey along with the bill of sale for the shed, if it's a pre-manufactured shed. They could upload all of that, all of those specs. It would go through the process digitally. They would get a bill that would say, you owe us X amount of dollars for the permit, whatever it is, you know. I think sheds are 60 dollars. I could be wrong. They could then use a credit card or an e-check to pay for it. They could also pay their water bill at the same time, buy a dog park key fob, one-stop shopping. And then, once the permit issue is screwed, it would be emailed to them and done. They would not have to step foot in this building whatsoever. What's in it for the employees? Well, we'd get rid of a lot of paper. From an employee point of view, we could go into a portal. We could apply for vacation time, and it would be approved digitally. So there'd be no more accusations of, I applied for my vacation time, but the paperwork got lost. There would be an electronic purchasing system. The employee would log into the system. They would put in, I want 10 widgets with the appropriation number of XYZ. It would go through the digital purchasing system. The department head would approve it, the town manager, the town council, et cetera, et cetera. And then, once it's approved, it would be ordered. Once it's received, the employee would then go back to the website. They would click on received. That tells the system that it was received. The money is now earmarked to be paid and would automatically be put on the docket. So there would be a much more streamlined system of, you know, eliminating paperwork. Basically, that's about it. I know Sergio is going to get more into details about the building and planning part of the software, but it would be phenomenal for the workflow for the employees. It would, everybody would have access to the data that they would need. There would be no more need to print out reports that are obsolete the moment that they're printed. If you needed something, you could go online. The resident could look online and say, where's my permit? The resident could look online and say, where's my permit? Well, it's currently being reviewed by so-and-so. It'll take another three days, and then you'll get your approval, or you'll get a red tag or a request for more information. So.
Are there any towns that have that already?
Oh, yes. There are several towns that have. The city of Crown Point has a solution from Tyler Technologies. Cedar Lake has a solution from BSNA. The city of Hammond has something from Tyler Technologies as well. Harris ERP is, it's a little, well, a medium-sized community just to the north of Indianapolis. I'm sorry, I can't remember the place at the moment. But there are a lot of municipalities that are moving to this type of a system just because it enhances the workflow. There is a lot more accountability because you can go into the software and say, so-and-so is holding this up because they haven't approved it, it's sitting in their box. So that, you know, you can't say, well, I didn't get it, you did, it's sitting right there.
All right.
So I just want to add on to what Jason's presentation was. But I want to thank the council, the clerk treasurer, and the town manager for allowing the departments to kind of speak of what their needs are. When we met at the department head meeting and the town manager mentioned that this was going to happen, I went back and talked to our, the building and planning staff. And unanimously, they all said, we need software. We don't need this, we don't need anything else, but we need a software, we need the tools to expedite and facilitate our jobs. Everyone from the clerk, from the building commissioner, the clerks, part-time clerks, electrical inspectors, they're all asking for a software upgrade. And so what I want to talk to you guys about is really is why the need is now even more important than, more necessary than ever, especially coming through this pandemic. Prior to the pandemic, things were done differently. Society was different, the demands were different, the expectations were different. You would go out and do your shopping, you wouldn't do online, things wouldn't get delivered. You wouldn't get the information that you needed within a minute's time or a second's time. And so society's gotten used to those types of societal changes that are occurring now because of this pandemic, the way we've been working. And so that is also passed on into the building and planning department. They're wanting, they're calling, we're getting calls, inundated with calls, what's the status of my permit, I submitted it yesterday? Well, we have over twenty thousand permits that we review or inspections that we conduct, we can't do this in twenty-four hours, even in our working day. But at least if we had a software program that can give us the ability to say what the status is, the resident can check in, three in the morning when they can't sleep because they're worried about what the status is of their permit, they can check in and see what the status is. The idea would be that, well, let me go ahead and move forward with this presentation. So like I said, that's the idea, is that we would then keep up with the societal trends or demands of providing a service and conducting a service that is expected by the public as we receive the calls. So that's a request. So the next slide I want to talk about real quick is the ERP software. There's many different programs out there, and I'm not sure, and I can't speak to what is most compatible to what we're currently using, what would transfer the data seamlessly, which ones would work well together. But what I can tell you is that with this software program, the people that would really benefit from this is your constituents, the residents, the contractors, the builders. They're the ones who are asking, inquiring our offices of status. And so if we have a program that, once an inspection is done and they click on their mobile device, after inspection is done, it says "complete," the inspector or the contractor or the resident would know immediately. My project is ready, is completed with inspections. The next phase would then would be permit issuing or payment of the permit request. That's the kind of effect that we, that this society is working towards now, especially after coming out of the pandemic. So this gives us the opportunity to respond at the rate that the public is asking for this information. It also allows for information to be transferred by the public. We get numerous calls. I don't know if my neighbor pulled a permit, but can you check on them? Absolutely. St. John residents are passionate about their community, they want to know what's happening. So we give them that information. But if we had a tool that can be used for the public to use as a resource to do that information on themselves, at least it could at least pacify their interest or their inquiries to what's happening. So with the ERP software, like I said, there's plenty of programs out there, I'm not sure which would work best. But like, the thought is that it would increase our service level demands. Again, we would have new, because of the new expectations, we were able to, we would be able to respond to inquiries faster and receive them quicker as well, at the convenience of the residents, of the constituents, of the contractors, whoever is really wanting this information as quick as possible. It will provide with greater transparency. Again, the residents will have access to it on their, at their own personal time, in their website or on the town's website to obtain that information, find out what approvals have been granted, what permits have been issued, what the statuses of permits. Also, when we have inspectors out there or conducting work and they see work being done, they can easily log onto their device and determine whether a permit's been issued or not issued to that site. If it's been issued, they can address it on-site rather than calling the office and say, hey, can you check on this permit or this address, has their permit been issued? I don't know, hold on, I've got someone at the counter, I've got someone on the phone, give me one second, I'll go ahead and see what I can find for you. The results are on, is initially on-site, on-demand, and they can address the issues in real time. Again, goes back to the sharing of information in real time, updates are completed, and the site and immediate status notification. Again, when an inspection is done, I give you an incident or an example. Yesterday evening, there was an inspection done, there was questions to regards to what code is applicable. The contractor called and said, hey, I really would like to do insulation tonight, but I can't because I got a red tag, there's some miscommunication or misunderstanding of the code. When can you give me an information, or give me some idea of when we can release this red tag? The response is, we have to wait at least forty-eight hours because the next individuals that's coming in, we have to confirm with them on the code that was cited and the red tag that was written. Had we had equipment that we can take a picture immediately, upload it, and then red-tag it, the contractor would know immediately what's happened. They can contact our office or contact individual, and we would resolve it within a day rather than twenty-four, forty-eight hours, maybe even seventy-two hours, based on the work schedule that we're operating under. Again, it would enhance collaboration, reduction, as Jason mentioned, reduction of document transfers. I've been in this industry for twenty years, and I'm surprised at how much documents, paper documents are transferred from department to department to department. I get that we need to have records and absolutely support that. I'm just amazed at how much transfer of documents is being conducted in this day and era when other communities are operating under different programs and more efficiently, more effectively. So. The, again, it would also, finally, would improve the experiences, again, with regards to faster submission time and facilitation of information. That's really what we're lacking in the building and planning department, is just getting that information out and receiving it within a timely manner, and then turning it around so that way the residents, the contractors are satisfied, at least knowing what the status is of their permits or any inspections that are being conducted. And really, at the end of the day, this is really all better to meet the public's needs. Again, societal changes of occurring, and their needs and demands are different than they were four years ago, six years ago. And so we're wanting for equipment to keep up with that. Next slide. And so, the way we see this software program, any ERP software program that's compatible with what we're working with, it really is, we already have a GIS as reprogrammed that is a tool that is not being used to its capacity. We also have a near-map program that we've acquired for the town services in which we currently use as well. Marry that with the GIS as reprogramming, you've got a phenomenal program. Add an ERP software program, you've got an amazing tool for the community that can be used by the employees and the residents. So that is really what we're asking for, is to have this department become more adaptive and agile for services to become more efficient and effective for your constituents, for the contractors, and for the residents of St. John. That is, no, I think that's it, let's see what the last one is. Yeah, I'm asking that you at least consider this one request for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a strategic investment into the town's assets that we already have, assets whether you see them as programs, people, whatever the case is, and really advancements of the town's human capital. Again, this opportunity would give the town's employees the opportunity to allocate their skills to other resources and expedite other projects as well. So that is my request.
Sergio, do you, do you and Jason, have you guys worked out a number or at least an idea of what kind of money we're talking about?
It really depends upon the departments and the modules that you want to purchase. Everything is à la carte.
Of course.
So, yeah, if you want.
I was just curious if you had a ballpark.
The initial implementation, I'm going to guesstimate somewhere between three fifty and four hundred thousand dollars because there is the initial huge upfront cost.
Get the initial base.
Right. And then, depending upon other options, you have, the other large cost is going to be your data conversion charges. Because some, building and planning has building permits going back to nineteen ninety-seven. That's when this database was written. And it's gonna take a lot of time to move all that data into something current and supported.
Especially to age of it, yeah.
So with regards to Jason, I communicating, Jason has a different language. He speaks IT. I just tell Jason what my wish list is to help facilitate the workload and the response to our residents. And Jason then digests that and.
Translates.
And translates it into IT language, so.
Thanks, Sergio.
Thank you.
So the final thing under the replacement for public sector loss of revenue is the Parks Department. So had some conversations with our prior superintendent, Tyler. There were, there were three items that was, he was very keen on getting as far as ARPA allocation. Now, there was, or there is a hundred thousand dollars allocated in the five-year plan for the pickleball court, which would be the proposed park that's just east of Gates on Klein Avenue. So in order to facilitate that, there would be, need to be an additional two hundred and fifty thousand for that. One of the other things that he thought was needed was to have a pavilion and a restroom at the Gates Park. That estimation he was figuring was about two hundred thousand. And then, trail repairs at Lake Hills would be about forty thousand eight hundred, based on the estimates that he got for that. So that's for the Parks Department. So I'm gonna have Trista, if she would speak on the, and Beth as well, on the employee. Yeah.
Yeah, so the one.
Premium pay.
I wanted to mention, Joe said that the park's warrant was the last thing in the revenue replacement. However, part of the item listed under the premium pay really needs to be considered as lost revenue anyway. The first responders, the people on the front lines, turn it on, maybe, sorry about that.
Do I need to repeat what I said?
Please.
When I started talking, indicated that one other item to be put into the lost revenue category is part of the premium pay that's listed. The first responders, police, fire, would be appropriate premium pay recipients under the ARP guidelines. Other employees of the town, though, who you might also like to give bonus to, should not be paid as premium pay because they're not on the front line responding to the COVID pandemic. The lost revenue category, you can use to spend without definition, whatever kind of government services you want to. And so someone like, maybe in the clerk's office, despite the fact that their work was very important and that they may have spoken to people in the public, it would not really meet the same definition of a frontline COVID interacting employee. And so we just simply would call that lost revenue. One thing, do you have anything to add to that little piece?
No, I agree with that.
One other thing I want to add, though, quickly, is these categories are good, and it gives you as the committee and the council a way to frame the priorities of where you want to spend. And it gives the public some categories to know that you're still responding to the pandemic losses and still have some, some other important areas other than just spending money on regular government stuff. But there was the change by the feds that anyone who received less than ten million dollars in total money could call everything lost revenue. And we absolutely do suggest that you do that. Keep these categories in mind and use it as your framework. But by calling everything under the lost revenue category, which is perfectly legal and fine, it makes the annual reporting that you have to do through this wonderfully friendly US Treasury website so much easier because it's one lump sum, you don't have to define anything, you don't have to justify anything. You don't have to worry later during audit about whether they come back and say, wow, that, that kind of was COVID-related, maybe it wasn't. If we just enter everything as lost revenue, ultimately, when we go to classify it and give the report to the feds, as we have to do, everything will be much more simple. So keep the categories in your conversations if you want to, that's fine. But when we go to report later, we will encourage everything to be actually lost revenue.
Yeah, and to your point, Trista, we would also include that as part of the plan, if you will.
Yes.
That would be adopted by the council.
Yes, that way the audit would see that it was done.
And then when we do the appropriations, it would be at the same thing, too.
Yeah.
It's question time. So let's, I've got some questions, I'm sure you guys have questions as well. So let's go right back through the same order that we started in. And we'll talk to fire first. If I can find my questions.
Answer C. I pick C.
So the first one with gear, you've got ninety, I'm sorry, you've got sixty NFPA compliant something, but twenty-five sets of EMS gear.
Yes, sir.
Why the difference between, why the difference between the number, why do you need sixty, I guess would be my question.
So sixty will cover all.
Twenty-five.
Sixty will cover all employees, so it'll cover every part-timer, every POC, and every full-timer.
Gotcha, okay. Ballistic vests and gear for ten.
For ten, so those.
So I understand what you're gonna use those for, could you go with half of that? I mean, are you gonna have more than five?
So on a, on a, on a good day, we will have six on shift.
Okay.
Plus Deputy Chief Gillette and I, and then if we have a POC that's hanging out at station or a student or someone else, we do respond with ten regularly, especially for something like that.
Okay. That's the questions I had. Anybody else for fire? Oh, I did have one more, I'm sorry, the safer grant, when do you expect an answer on that?
Look, you pushing it back, I was told March, I legit check it every day. Nothing of today, and I'll wake up tomorrow and check as well.
Okay. When was that submitted?
It was due end of January.
Okay.
So you've been on the hook for what, five months already?
So they, so it's through FEMA, so through the federal government, so I'm sure you guys understand how quickly things like that go. They were supposed to meet after FDIC, the big conference in Indianapolis, they did meet then. They had a significant amount of applications, they did two cuts then, we're still in the running, but it just says still submitted. So if I wasn't still in the running, it would say not declined, it'd say declined.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, next.
If any of the council members have any questions, obviously, there's a lot to digest here, you know, just send them in writing.
You don't feel guilty, do you, Bob? Because you win a prize for asking for the most money.
So let me, let me start by asking you the difference between, why is a culvert safer than that guardrail that's up there and Joliet Street Bridge that got knocked out?
What's there now is a concrete.
It's a guardrail.
It's a guardrail.
That was a temporary fix after the head wall was knocked down. What's in place now is a box, concrete box culvert. Okay, concrete square structure.
Right.
Okay. The problem is, the road is so narrow there. So what we're gonna do is to expand that box culvert, get the guardrail slash headwalls further away. further away, and there's also a gas pipeline that runs right over the ditch on the south side. So, it's, there's nothing really supporting that guardrail right now. It's at its limit of being compliant.
Okay. Okay. Salt Barn and the property, is some of that in the budget for this year or the five-year plan? I thought we had the Salt Barn was earmarked, or at least some money for the Salt Barn was earmarked for this-
Originally it was, I don't know if it's still in there.
It's under your GO bond. You took your general obligation bond out and roughly $200,000 is earmarked towards the storage unit in a brine system.
And it's under the GO now?
Correct.
So, some of that's there, then?
If it's all still there, is it all still there?
It is.
Okay.
But does not include land.
Right, okay. Anybody else? That's all I have for Bob.
Your $300,000 includes land in the structure for the Salt Barn?
What's that again?
Your estimate within your ask, that is just for the Salt Barn itself, not the property?
Pretty much probably for the property.
I see it separated out, $250,000 and $300,000.
Yeah, pretty much, well, $250,000 roughly could be the Salt Barn itself, we're probably looking at 300 for property. Just-
Got it. Thank you for your five minutes.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you.
So, the money that was earmarked for the license plate readers from last year, that wasn't, didn't spend that money, so is that money gone now? That money get reverted?
No, we put a plate in.
You did spend-
We do have one, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, mhm.
Okay, the notes I have here said they were never required, so, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, we did get one.
Okay. And then any of the other stuff? Part of the five-year plan that we really kind of had built into our budget?
The cars, they're in there. And then, we don't have the license plate reader in there. We do have replacement tasers, but not the cartridges.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, basically, just the cars then are in the five-year plan?
Yes.
Everything else would be additional?
Correct.
And the employees.
Right, right.
What's that?
The employees are in the five-year plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought we put the cameras in there.
Right, we're looking at, with the, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I thought we put the cameras in the five-year plan.
They did the one.
They did, the one. The one was in there.
Oh, just one?
Yes.
Okay, so you didn't pick up two more?
Correct.
Okay. I remember talking to you about it and I don't remember how many we all added in.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so my goal was with police and fire both, is we've got, if we look at what the plans are between now and the time that these funds need to be allocated, you would be hiring two guys, fire would be adding two guys, and so if we can use the ARPA funds to employ them now, when we get to the end of-
The term.
The term there, that's already going to be budgeted money, so it's not like we need to find additional monies at that time.
Right.
And that fits into this, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we could build a plan around it to include it as the money ran out from ARPA. It could go right into the five-year plan.
Correct.
Okay.
I think we talked about that, too, didn't we?
Yes, yep.
Chief, do the LPRs require digital storage, like a body camera system does? The LPRs, do they require you to pay for digital storage?
Yeah, there's an annual subscription fee and that's, I think it's $4,200 a year.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's enough storage for what you think you need?
Well, we don't store anything on, that's all stored on like on a cloud through the vigilant system.
No, I know, but that price point, though, I'm saying, that gives you-
Yes.
Enough storage assigned to you to St. John's for what you need.
Correct. It does, yes.
And is that 42 included in the 71?
That is not, no.
Just hardware?
Just the hardware and installation.
So, the build-out for the safety, public safety building, you've got $120,000 earmarked. We've got 440 for fire. Those are two separate numbers that need to be added together for that building, correct? There's not an overlap there?
Correct.
If I may, so I, we did speak to two different- Hatchet Florence.
If I, if I may, we did speak to two different contracting agencies to find out what their estimated cost would be. They wanted to enter a contract before giving it, so those are very rough numbers. So, I asked them if they were going to give me something very rough, to give me something very rough high. I'd rather come in high than low.
Right.
So, there's some possibility there that there is some overlap, like one thing, there would be a wall in a common hallway. I would assume that the fire department would cover that because it's going to be separating the living space from the offices.
Okay, but basically they're separate things.
They're separate but together because it's the same space.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify, make sure that, yeah, okay. That's all I have. All right? Wait, no?
All right, thank you.
Have you got things at all built into anything in the five-year plan forecast? Did we build anything in?
We didn't build this into it, no.
Okay.
It was in the first version of the five-year plan, but it was removed.
Okay. I remember talking about it, but I don't remember what we decided to do with it.
So, the software that you're anticipating, I guess this could go to Jason as well, it's going to be able to piggyback onto the GIS system and the map system that we, that you're currently using.
That is the idea, that we would be able to merge the, through the GIS system, which would have polygons established for the lot lines for property parcels, I should say, that we would establish a point within each of these parcels and then within that point, you can attach attributes. And those attributes would include building permits, you know, anything that comes from that, inspections, also with onsite inspections, they can be uploaded in real time once they're completed. Because right now, what happens is the guys go out there to do the inspections, to get the paper ticket, go out to the sites, run around town, get the inspections done, bring it back, and then file them. And so, the idea would be that that would actually be done on the field in real time.
Okay. So, at the end of a whole building process, when the guy comes back with his development and says, okay, I would like my, I would like a refund back on the money that I put up my bond money or whatever, with software you'd be able to review, make sure that all the, all the permits are done?
Yeah.
All the inspections are done?
That's, that's the intent.
And then with the, and I'm not sure if this goes to you or if it goes to Bob, but as far as making sure the final surfaces on the roads and the elevations are all complete and things like that, is that going to be in this software as well?
That is the idea, that as part of this program, we would have those in there and the inspections are done by the Public Improvements Inspector and the town engineer to confirm that that work has been completed and then the release of those surety, performance sureties, and then moving forward with any maintenance sureties as well.
Okay.
What you're referring to is called a workflow in the ERP parlance. So, basically, you build the workflow how you want the workflow to be. So, if you want it to be A, B, C, D, you program it that way. If you want it to be A, D, F, G, B, C, you program it that way. It's completely up to us how we determine the workflow, how we want to work. Now, there are things called best standards. Those are the default settings. So, we might want to consider tweaking some of our processes if we find that this might actually work better for us. And then again, we might find that the way we're currently doing things is the way we want to continue doing things. We make the software do it that way.
Okay.
Yeah, so this evening, we had our building permit clerk stay over two and a half hours to review the escrows. At one time, we were looking at approximately 30 escrows that needed to be released. But upon reviewing that, going back through the paperwork and the documents, rather than it being uploaded in real time, we discovered that 10 of those actually, or five of those were actually released and another five can be released because they are into compliance now. And so, the goal would be then that we would reduce that type of workload and it would be captured in real time.
Okay.
So, does the 350, Sergio, that you have listed, the 350,000, in addition to what Jason has listed as the 816, or it's included?
I don't know.
It's included in the 816. Now-
The 350 is his portion?
Right.
Okay.
As well as the one-time upfront cost of everything, so also, those numbers are about four to five years old. I did estimate a little bit higher due to inflation and everything. And again, a lot of these numbers are going to depend upon what modules we choose. You know, if we find that there's new modules available that, you know, do things, we might be interested in them. So, the price might be higher, it might be lower, it just depends.
Yeah.
So, then I'm going to, my questions then, thank you, Sergio. My questions are then going to come back to you. So, is this a cloud-based service or is it going to be a hosted service? Or you're not sure yet?
Well, most of the companies offer both options as on-premise or cloud-based. On-premise is going to be less expensive because you are not paying the company to host your data for you. So, yes, there is a larger upfront cost because you have to invest in a new server and some new licensing, but your long-term costs are going to be much lower because you're not paying them to do all of that.
Okay. And then you mentioned how easy it was going to be for people to look at their water bill or pay their water bill and things like that. My question is, is that crosses over to Beth's side, can you do water in this without messing up your Keystone system?
Yeah, we're just going to stick with Keystone, so we would not, my office would not go into any of the additional modules. We're pleased with our Keystone system, it meets SBOA guidelines, and so we're going to stick with that. Totally get it on Sergio's side, why you would need some sort of software, but we're pretty pleased with ours. From a resident's standpoint, we have Invoice Cloud, which is a one-stop shop. They can pay miscellaneous fees and pay their water bill all in one, coordinates directly with Keystone, so we don't really see a need for it.
Okay.
From Sergio's standpoint, 100%, you need something in your department.
Is it possible, well, hopefully, then, maybe you can get an upload at the end of the month from your water bills that could go into that or something? Never mind, I don't want to go there.
Okay.
Forget it. Okay. That's all I had. Okay. So, my understanding is we're going to hash this over, review this, bounce ideas off of each other, and then-
And then we'll be, we'll be having discussions and meetings with the department heads again just to kind of pare down, you know, based on the feedback we get from the council.
Okay. And then at what point are we going to have a public hearing?
Well, first, we would adopt, once we have the, basically, kind of where our final numbers are, we'll have our plan done, we'll adopt the plan. Then we'll go ahead and move forward with having the public hearings and then having the money appropriated.
Okay.
Trista, do you have anything? Do you want to add on that?
I'm sorry, maybe I'm, maybe I was confused for just a second. Public hearing on the additional appropriation, for sure.
Right, yes.
Once that's all decided at the end.
Right.
Is there a public input portion prior to deciding the plan?
Yeah, so the thought was is that we would have the plan basically put out there to the public so they could comment and, you know, give any feedback that they want with respect to, you know, what's being proposed. Obviously, that feeds into the public hearing portion of the appropriations as well.
Gotcha.
Either that or we could do it as a study session, kind of like building and planning does, just to get some input, but we can do it, yeah.
Yeah, totally up to your preference how you want to run it. I think the public would feel more, more heard, I guess, maybe, if you had one, one way, whether it's a hearing, whether it's a way to email, whatever it might be, to post some ideas before you put the plan in writing.
Well, I would agree, but we knew, we need to fine-tune a little bit of this.
Mm-hmm.
And then I would like to make that public, maybe put it on the website where anybody could download it that wants to see it.
Sure.
So, then they can either email or when we have an open session, whether it's a study session or whatever, then we can allow some public-
Give them some information to review and comment on, sure, yeah.
So, I'd like to condense this before we send it out to everybody else to say, well, here's what we're thinking about.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's kind of what I was thinking. If that makes sense.
That's fair.
Okay.
I'm fine with that process.
Okay.
And just one final thing, I want to thank all the department heads for all your hard work and input on this. This was, you know, good job tonight.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. This is, this is a big chunk of money that we can do some amazing things with for this town, and so your input and suggestions are valuable. With that, I lost my agenda underneath the piles here. Is there anything else or are we looking for adjournment?
No, that's the last point.
All right, then I will-
Unless they want to give another presentation, that'd be fine.
No, we're not going to let them do that.
No.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?